Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, the 25th of January 2002 at 6:00 PM. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville, and I call the meeting to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Yeah.
Isaac Shanley.
Here.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Yeah.
Eileen Nichols. Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Okay, and the first order of business tonight is a presentation by our city manager on the 2021 year in review. So take it away, Adam.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. So one of the things we wanted to do this year was present kind of the 2021 year in review. So the first thing I thought would be kind of interesting is to give you a visual presentation. So as you can see to my right here, this is every single council packet that was discussed during 2021. So as you can see, we did a lot. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of review. So this presentation is not an all-inclusive list, as you can see by the amount of information there, but what we tried to capture was multiple things that each individual department, and also as a council and as a city as a whole, some of the goals that we achieved. So one of the first things obviously that we accomplished in 2021 was the official adoption of a new vision and mission statement. So obviously, that's out there. I'm not going to read it, but that was a big accomplishment that took a lot of meetings and getting feedback from not only US council members, but the public as well. So those are now two things that we are going to be using as we go forward as a city in promotion and marketing, not only our mission, but also our vision. Some of the other things that were done was the common council spotlight series. So as you recall, in 2021, we held a number of Zoom and in-person meetings where the community had the opportunity to kind of get to spend a little one-on-one time with each individual council member and also bring any questions, concerns, or issues that they had, so that council members could listen to that, as well as the city manager and myself. This is something that we are going to be looking at continuing and doing again this year, because we did get good feedback that people enjoyed it, thought it was worthwhile, so we'll continue to kind of keep doing those. One of the main things we started was a new video marketing campaign, so I definitely want to give shout out to our communication specialist, Jody Richards. She spent a lot of time working on this, and also shout outs to all of those that were in that. My dog was a big part of the dog park video, so that was exciting. He enjoyed that. But we did a number of video series this year that were different. We had Mike Marr, who was on there as well, promoting his book that he wrote. We talked about the ice rink. We did the Platteville Pickaxe Series, a couple of living and local-loving things about our dog park, as well as also the Gaga pit that we have. So that's something that we're going to be continuing to do in future years as well. We created a working equity, diversity, and inclusion statement. So this was also something that was a strategic planning goal that we wanted to do, but we now have a working statement that is on our website, and we do use throughout all our documents. And one of the big things, obviously, that came out of this was the creation of the Task Force for Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity. So this is made up of staff members, council members, and also members of the public, as well as businesses, et cetera, that now meet typically about the fourth Tuesday of every month. They actually met today, where we basically have a group where we get together, we talk about issues that are impacting inclusivity, diversity, and equity, and are working on a couple of different initiatives. So we're hopeful that in the coming months here, there's going to be a joint work session between that group and the council to kind of talk about goals and initiatives. City Hall upgrades. Definitely want to give a huge shout out to Shannon Butson, our building maintenance specialist. He did a huge transformation of the room that we are currently in, as you can see in the pictures. He went to town through the month of January and February, removing every single nail that is in this floor, getting it to its status that it is, doing painting. He created the podium that is now in the council chambers. He also did a lot of work with our vaults and kind of cleaning those out and working with staff on that, as well as also making the city hall a little festive this year when it came to the holiday season. So we definitely want to give a big shout out to him for all of his efforts in working with that. The city transitioned our information technology services to UW-Platteville. So this is something that we are currently doing on a trial basis right now, but have been very pleased so far with the partnership. So all of our IT services that the city uses is being handled by the ITS department at UW-Platteville, and so we look to kind of continue that relationship. We do want to thank Copynet, who was our previous vendor, for the services that they provided over the years, but definitely felt that this was a worthwhile partnership to create, and we're looking to see how we can enhance that in years to come. We created a human resource specialist position. So we have Chad Wilson as our new HR human resource specialist, and he has been very well-received and doing a great job with staff in helping with recruiting, retention, and also providing more information to staff. There's now an HR informer letter that he sends out. He's also been working with all of our benefits and incentives and everything else, so we've been very happy with that. Our finance team has obviously had some significant transitions. So in 2020 and 2021, we had retirements of a lot of our longtime staff. So we have a new controller that has been with us. We have our three new account specialists. They all have been doing a really great job and kind of learning the in-and-outs. And so we're excited for, as the years to come, for them to get more comfortable in their roles and kind of continue the finances for the city. Also want to give a shout out to the finance department. So this will be Director Marr and her crew. They received, again, the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award, I believe for the fourth year in a row, if my memory serves me correctly. So that's a great testament, obviously, to the staff and to the council for all of the kind of budgetary moves that we do, as well as documents. That's our CIP and everything else, our strategic planning. So that definitely is a very distinguished award that we should be proud as a city that we have accomplished. Obviously, we've had a lot of new faces and retirements, so we want to acknowledge all of the new individuals that have come to the team. One of the big things we worked on was the completion of the Fire Department Comprehensive Analysis. So we started that in 2020, and obviously, it was presented to us in February of 2021. This was the kind of long-term planning for the fire station, looking out 50 years, as well as starting to determine some next best steps in regards to where a potential either updated fire station or new fire station could go. And with that, what came out of that study was the need to update our fire department service agreements. So those actually expired in 2019, so both myself and Chief Simmons spent pretty much a lot of the fall working with all of the townships in renewing those agreements and making some financial changes that obviously benefited the city, but also maintained the services for all of those different townships. And now the nice thing about these agreements is they have an auto-renew clause in them, so in the event that we would forget, as long as everything is going well, they'll continue to be in existence. So we're pretty pleased about that. The other big thing that we worked on was obviously the submitting the community project funding request through Representative Ron Kind's office. So this was a $13 million request that we sent in for a potential new fire station. It went through various kind of appropriation committees and house committees and was put into the budget at $7 million. And we are now just kind of waiting in hope, fingers crossed, that when the federal budget is passed, we're hoping in February that that $7 million will be included, and that will allow us to really kind of dig further into some of our strategic planning goals we have this year with hiring an architect, starting to plan out what that potential fire station could be in locations. So with that, we had the purchase of OE Gray Community Learning Center. We had learned from the school district that they were looking at potentially no longer owning this building and wanting to ensure that the current tenants that are utilizing that building, which is our Platteville Senior Center, along with our Head Start program and a lot of other partnership organizations, as well as potentially this being a future site for the newer updated fire station, we took the steps to basically secure that building. So now that is actually a city-owned building, and we are going to be continuing to work with those tenants to maintain it and look at potential future innovations that can be made. Business incubator upgrades and co-working space. So the Platteville Business Incubator in our industrial park went through a pretty major renovation and upgrade. Was the first time since that happened, I think, since 1997. So they did some major expansions into creating kind of a new co-working space that anybody who just needs a spot to do business can now come in and be charged kind of a daily rate or an hourly rate, depending on the contract that they sign, as well as updating some of the amenities that needed to be done with the floors, buildings, and space and everything else. Subdivision reimbursement agreement. So in September of 2021, the common council adopted a subdivision reimbursement agreement to be utilized to spur residential development. So again, these agreements can provide an incentive structure for a potential developer to be reimbursed up to 25% for eligible public improvement costs and to be reimbursed a higher percentage if they build a certain number of homes within a designated date. So this is something now that is available for anybody that potentially would be looking to do a subdivision in the city. It's another tool to try to spur, again, economic development. Our planning commission went through a numerous review of a lot of ordinances and changes. They reviewed chapter 21, chapter 22, and parts of chapter 22, chapter 5, which will obviously be discussing more in detail tonight, and chapter 24 in regards to fire prevention and protection. We read the subdivision ordinance. So again, we want to give a big shout out to Director Carroll, as well as the planning commission and the common council for continually reviewing and updating our ordinances accordingly. Our Affordable Housing Improvement Assistance Program. So in 2021, the city of Platteville continued to market its Affordable Housing Improvement Assistance Program. These programs are designed to help with the cost of remodeling and renovating existing single-family homes. These are only for properties which have an assessed value of $150,000 or less. The program allows a property owner to receive either a home improvement loan up to $25,000 or a rental conversion grant up to $10,000 for homes which are being converted from a rental property to owner-occupied. And so far, the city of Platteville has approved seven of these particular programs. One of the big things we did as far as budgeting was our 2022 to 2026 Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. So during the September 14th, 2021, common council meeting, the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan was adopted. This plan was different over years past, as it was a more comprehensive planning analysis, looking at all departments of the city and mapping out beyond 2026 regarding when road projects and items within the city will need to be funded. Again, this was an amazing accomplishment by both city staff and the common council to put together to provide the city of Platteville with a roadmap and understanding the future needs, impacts, and limitations, and will again be looking at every year, kind of updating this and continuing this process. We had some major commercial projects. We had the DuPaco Credit Union Edition and Remodel, the Tower North Communication Tower, the 800 Vision Drive tenant build-out, the Stop and Go Fuel System Alteration, Elango Corrugated Additions, and the Dunkin' Donuts remodel. We had our clerks department tackle redistricting. So on October 26, 2021, the Platteville Common Council voted to approve the adoption of the new district map and ordinance, 2020-21-08. Again, due to the complications from the pandemic, the federal government release of the census population data in 2021 was significantly delayed, which resulted in a compressed timeline for all the counties and municipalities. Redistricting takes place again every 10 years following the US Census. So this truncated timeline and approval was again a testament to our staff in reviewing the information and preventing what was needed for approval to the common council. So definitely want to give a shout out to Director Barr, Clerk Klaus, and Deputy Clerk Stefan for all of their work in regards to putting all of that together, as well as Chris, our GIS specialist, for doing a lot of the maps and information. And now the task, obviously, that we have is making sure we get this information out, because we do have an election coming up. So we want to make sure that everybody knows kind of the changes that have been made and where they're supposed to be voting. We had the Sanders Try and Pickleball Complex. So on October 23rd, 2021, the official open house occurred for the Sanders Try and Pickleball Complex. Again, this was an amazing public-private partnership with the Platteville Area Pickleball Association to create this amazing amenity for residents and visitors. As part of this project as well, the tennis courts at Westview Park also got a facelift. The Brasky Center continues to be all the rage. We had about 138 reservations that were booked in 2021 for utilization of the Brasky Center, which reigns from weddings, gatherings, graduations, parties, and community events. And currently, the Brasky Center has a 5.0 star rating on Google, so can't complain about that. The Mount View Campground Expansion. So in 2021, the city of Platteville started the expansion of Mount View Campground. The expansion will add seven campsites to maximize the number of sites permitted with current restrooms, and the expansion is planned to be ready in time for the 2022 campground season. The museum received a community development block grant for the roofing project. So in working with Ron Brisbray of Grant County, the city of Platteville was awarded a community development block grant for the re-roofing of the Hammer Robbins School Building. The project is estimated to cost up to $367,776. The project was started in the fall of 2021. It is anticipated to be completed by the summer of 2022. The museum also received some historic designations. So on May 14th, the State Historic Preservation Review Board of the Wisconsin Historical Society voted unanimously to list the 1863 Rock School and the 1905 Hammer Robbins School Building to the Wisconsin Register of Historic Places, and the National Register of Listing followed on October 4th. And another big accomplishment that they worked on was the museum creation of a site and facility comprehensive plan. The Site and Facility Comprehensive Plan began in the summer of 2022 in collaboration with the Kubalo Wasatua. I'm sure I'm going to butcher this, but the Wasatoka Architects, and was unveiled in 2021. The plan celebrates the future of the Miami and Rollo Jameson's Museum, which remains Platteville's leading tourist attraction. In 2022, the museum staff will be advancing the plans for the next phase of museum campus designs and starting a capital campaign drive. Some other things, obviously, that they wanted to call out was the museum's collection care major initiative. So this was a huge project that they worked on in 2021, categorizing a lot of the current collection that is in the museum, and what came out of this was a new exhibit. So there actually is an exhibit dedicated towards Native Americans and in regards to some of the artifacts that were in the Rollo Jameson collection. So we're very excited for that. We had the Platteville Public Library Book Bike. So in May of 2021, the Platteville Public Library, through a Platteville Community Fund grant, purchased a book bike. The book bike was at several events in 2021 and can be used for book checkouts, activities, book giveaways, and programming. The other thing that also happened is the Platteville Library went fine-free. So in 2021, the Platteville Public Library officially became fine-free. This means they no longer charge overdue fines for Platteville Public Library books. This change will help everyone have access to library materials and services, and the Platteville Public Library created an amazing video to showcase the news that was on Facebook and YouTube. Our police department earns the WILIG accreditation. So on Friday, November 12th, the Platteville Police Department was notified that the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group Board met and voted unanimously to accredit the Platteville Police Department. The achievement of accreditation status is the culmination of over a three-year process. Accreditation through WILIG means that all of the policies, procedures, and practices of the Platteville Police Department are in line with federal law, Wisconsin law, current case law, and the best practices in the field of law enforcement. Only about 7% of law enforcement agencies in Wisconsin have reached accreditation status through WILIG, and those that do are typically larger agencies from bigger jurisdictions. So again, this is an amazing accomplishment for the police department and will enhance their abilities to deliver quality service in each day. So definitely want to give a shout out to Chief McKinley and all of the staff for all of their hard work in earning that accreditation. One of the things we challenged the police department to do last year was some Facebook videos in regards to some of our ordinances and common occurrences. So the Platteville Police Department often receives questions about the ordinances, regulations that are needed to Platteville. So in 2021, in order to answer those questions, the department created several fun and informative videos. Also, the police department is out in our community. So throughout the 2021, the Platteville Police Department participated in multiple events in the community. Officer Josh Stowe completed his first year as the city of Platteville's Community Resource Officer. Public Works Projects. So 2021 saw the city of Platteville focus on several public works-related projects. We had the duty street repair. The project was completed in November. We had the Deborah Courts Storm Sewer Ditch Restoration was completed in summer, and Business Highway 21 is slated for completion in 2022. So that's kind of a brief summary of everything that occurred, and now obviously, it's let's do this 2022. So definitely want to give a big shout out to the common council, city employees, volunteers, and residents and visitors for a successful 2021. Despite still being in the pandemic, it is amazing all the things that we've accomplished as a city, and here we come, 2022.
Hey folks, any specific questions or comments you want to make about our year of 2021?
Busy.
Was busy. It was productive. Great job. Of all the people who worked so hard to get this done. Takes a team. Thank you. All right, moving on then in our agenda, we have two public hearings tonight. So we will start with ordinance 2201, Chapter 5, the hearing for health and property maintenance. Joe?
Yes, thank you. So the changes to what is currently Chapter 5 Health, changing the title to Health and Property Maintenance to better reflect what's in that chapter. So there was a couple of things that, some of it's just kind of basic housekeeping as far as code references and language. But the first part and kind of the main time-consuming part of it was to look at the weeds and lawn maintenance section. I think we talked about it last time. There were some weaknesses in our current ordinances that made it very difficult to enforce it as far as the weeds and when they had to be cut down and so forth. So we really, in a way, I think we added some language to it, but in the result was really to simplify it, make it easier to interpret and enforce. So it's, I think, clearer now as to if you've got a noxious weed on your property, it has to be removed, kind of no questions. And if it's hands or buts, we expanded the list of what those noxious weeds would be considered, made it more in line with the Wisconsin state laws regarding weeds and noxious weeds, and then kind of clarified some language regarding lawn maintenance. There's some language, again, garbage, refuse accumulation, junk vehicles, et cetera. I think it's really more of a cleaning up the language a little bit, some code references to state statutes that we had to update, remove some language throughout the ordinance where it references a certain dollar amount for a violation. We tend to try to do that instead of having it scattered through all the municipal code chapters. We have it in one section of the code, so it'll be easier to make changes to that, the price reference. Swimming pool fences, there was some language in there regarding height of the fences and when they're required, so forth. We have another section in the building code where we adopt the portions of the International Property Maintenance Code that also has regulations regarding swimming pool fences, so we wanted to make sure that those were consistent. So basically, it changes the minimum depth of the water in the pool before you need a fence, and then the height requirement for the fence itself. And then, again, just some clarification of some language on clear water drainage, and again, removing some of the forfeiture amounts if there's a violation. Any questions regarding any of those changes?
Any questions regarding the changes that Joe has talked about? Joe, you would be called the staff and the applicant?
Well, I would say it's a cooperative effort, since Howard is directly involved as the weed commissioner, but Adam was involved as well, and we worked with the plant commission on these changes.
Okay.
Even though the plant commission doesn't really oversee this chapter, we just wanted to get some additional eyes on it and input.
So the next opportunity then would be public statements in favor. I've had nobody register to speak in favor. I've had nobody register to speak against, nor have I had anybody registered to make a statement in general. So I guess that means we move to council discussion, and Ken, you have passed out something, so.
I've sent out a handout up in here. My name here may appear. I got about a dozen copies. I want a copy to go to to Howard and to Joe, and one to the city clerk. And I don't know what I was left can go to the media. And what I'm talking about is on page two and three of the chapter five. Now, little background on this. We have had an issue as far as creeping Charlie. It is not listed as a noxious weed. And some neighbors have been located, are located next to a source of creeping Charlie, and it's been a problem for these people as far as maintaining their lawns without the presence of creeping Charlie. So I made up this little statement here, and it could be put on page two. I thought, well, it could go after number five. And I'm looking at where the, with the red lines, that copy. Or it could even go after number six. So I've written here number six, but it could be number seven. And it states control of creeping Charlie, and there's a scientific name there, and don't ask me to give that name as far as pronouncing it. No person owning, occupying, or controlling property in the city shall permit any growth of creeping Charlie within 10 feet of any property containing a residential dwelling unit. So this means that if somebody has a property next to you, and you have a house there and a lawn, and that property is supplying, next to your property, supplying creeping Charlie, my recommendation is that we have a 10-foot border as far as controlling creeping Charlie. Now, creeping Charlie is a very, I call it evasive weed, difficult to control. It spreads by underground stems, which we call rhizomes. It also spreads by seed. The 10 feet was selected because I'm thinking of people that may mow their lawn that have creeping Charlie and blow seed under somebody else's property. So that's why the 10 feet has been selected. So this is my recommendation as far as putting as either number six or number seven. So any questions about this?
So procedurally, how does this work?
So, wait, do you want to take it? Do you want me? I mean, essentially, yeah, it would be, as the council, you have every right to change or alter as you see fit what's in front of you. What would have to happen is essentially you would be asking for an amendment to be added into this, stating pretty much what Ken has here, and if you are on agreement of that being added in, then it's added in. If, you essentially need to vote on whether or not.
There has to be a motion.
So right, so essentially, the question is,
Add this to.
Is Ken has explained, you know, Councilmember Killian has explained his rationale for why he thinks that should be in there. So now Ken could, if he chose, could make a motion to ask that this be added into the changes. There would need a second. There'd have to be a vote, and if it's passed, then the amendment is added in.
To be added in.
Right, that would be, right, when you get to council action number eight, that's where you would do that.
When we get to action, yeah, okay. Is there any other council discussion on this? Anybody else want to make a comment on this Chapter 5 Health and Property Maintenance?
I would agree with Ken's recommendation to include creeping Charlie. However, I think because it's quite prominent in the city, I want to make sure that there's a really good education and kind of marketing campaign, because I think there's several yards, probably mine included, that would be in violation of this ordinance in terms of just how bad it could get and just how much it can take over. So I would want to see a good educational campaign in terms of letting people know about this.
One of the things that was brought up in the planning committee was not only the private yards, but we could probably go with any one of the city parks and find this, and that's why, this was discussed in great detail. This actually took up quite a bit of the timing at 2020. It was discussed. That's one reason why it was not added on there is because, like I said, if we, if we want these, this is the platform to have their yards free of creeping Charlie, they could, each one of them would go to the park and, or to the city and say, well, you got a park, you're not taking care of yours, why shouldn't we do ours? So that's why it wasn't added on at that time. And I'm not saying I don't disagree with Ken. I do, but, you know, it's one of them where we'd have to lead by example, and not sure that we could in this case.
I agree. Isaac, it was discussed at length at the plant commission, and that was one of the, that was one of the considerations of the plant commission was we have this all over our own parks, and now we're going to say no person can. Are we going to, what are we going to do to mitigate that in our own parks, and do we have the staff, and do we have the ability to do that? Because I don't think we can require it of others if we don't require it of ourselves.
As I see that, if you have it in a park, and if that park is adjacent to private property, actually right adjacent to it, no road in between, then you wouldn't have to be in compliance. We wouldn't be asking the park to control the creeping Charlie. But what this is saying here is that where the properties are proximity to each other, they're adjacent to each other, then the citizen has the right to bring in a complaint that he wants the creeping Charlie controlled. Is her neighbor. We're not going, so this is going to operate on a complaint basis. We're not going. The city is not going to be asked for next Throughout the city and say, well, you have creeping Charlie and what are you going to do about it? No, if somebody brings up a complaint about your complete creeping Charlie, then That would be a situation where the Charlie may be Control.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Discussion?
Let's just get clarification, Ken, on what you handed us for item seven. Lawn maintenance, no person.
I think it's whatever is written on it. It's just
It's referring back
Referring right back to so
Just wanted to confirm that. Okay.
Cause right now it says lawn maintenance is six.
Yep.
So he's saying change the number and then six, what is six becomes seven? Is that correct?
Yes, you can.
Yep.
You do it either way. You can make make it six or make it seven. Just change the number of the next thing. Jason thing. This is, this has been an issue now for For Charlie Clark and his neighbors now. Three, four neighbors been issue for one, two, three years.
I think you're not. I don't think you're talking about Charlie Clark.
Charlie.
Chamberlain. Chamberlain?
Yeah, Chamberlain. Charlie Clark, I know who he is.
I don't think you
It's a good name.
It's a good name. Any other council discussion? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, we'll vote. Is that Jason?
Yes, thank you.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're to common council action.
I would move that we add the suggested Amendment change as given by B here on page this page. So starting with six, we're numbering at seven, either one.
As you presented it.
As presented.
So there's a motion to amend Chapter five or yeah, chapter five ordinance 2201. Motion to amend. Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Isaac to adopt the amendment that addresses the control of creeping Charlie By its scientific name and talks about destroying. Well, it doesn't say it has to be destroyed. It says it has to be controlled. Shall permit any growth. Yeah. So it has to be controlled. Okay. So we'll vote on the amendment, Candace? Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, remember this is not noxious weeds are under destruction order. This is merely under a control order. So they're not under a destruction order. So now we'll now there's the amended ordinance 2201, chapter five. I would need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the amended ordinance 2205. Sorry, 2201, chapter five.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, now we'll vote on the ordinance. Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the second public hearing then. This was on the sidewalk policy amendment. This is chapter 22 ordinance 2201. Joe, we'll start with you.
Yes, so we had previously adopted a sidewalk policy that kind of provided an overarching guide for When sidewalks are required in the city as far as development opportunities. So we previously made some changes to chapter 21, the subdivision ordinance to implement that policy. This was a kind of the second part of that implementation. There's two sections in the zoning ordinance 22061 and 22062 are the Design review or the design standards, you could call it for Commercial and multifamily development in the city. So we're following through and having the same language from the policy inserted into there. So again, it's new new multifamily construction or redevelopment properties with multifamily. And the same with commercial, it dictates when the sidewalk is required to be installed. Any questions?
Again, you're the both the applicant and Staff. And I've had nobody register tonight as for against or in general as it relates to this This ordinance, so Chapter 22. So we're to then council discussion. So anybody with questions, comments? Okay, if there are none, then I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Public hearing. Okay, a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yeah.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and then if there it is now time if there is a motion for common council action.
Modifications. Sorry. Get your mouth. Still never talking to that. Okay, I would move to approve the modifications to sections 22.061 and 22.062. That's okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Lynn. Candace will vote. Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move into consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you want separate discussion or action. We have the council minutes from January 11th. We have payment of bills. I have no appointments to boards or commission. Mission. Yes, I have one appointment to a board tonight or I guess it's a board, the transportation committee. It's a committee, not a boards, commissions, committees. And that would be Tammy ends To that committee. Licenses, we have a temporary class B to serve ferment and malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery On Friday, February 18th for an artist opening reception. We have one and two year operator licenses to serve and sell sell alcohol as included in your packet as well as a taxi driver license. And we have the farmer's market street closing permit, banner permit and Waiver of the rental fee for the gazebo for the farmer's market, which will begin outside Saturdays, May 7th and continue through October 29th. So do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I move to approve all items listed under the consent calendar.
Second.
Hey, Candace will vote. Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have citizens comments, observations and petitions if any. I have had two green slips filed and neither both of those deal with agenda items later. So I have no items at this point, except I believe Does council person Nichols have an announcement she wants to make at this point in time?
Yep, pasty sale. All right, I was going to do it during the museum board report, but that's okay. So for those of you who have not yet been made aware of this, our museums are selling pasty. It's our fundraiser for the year. And you have choice of beef, chicken, pork or vegetable. You can call the museum directly and order, or you can contact any person who's on the museum board. That happens to be me. Or you can contact anybody who's on the friends of the museum board. They're delicious. I've tasted them and the miners wall will not be held this year, so this is a very important fundraiser for the museum. So please support it in any way you can. But again, call the museum if you'd like to order directly. Thanks.
And I believe our city clerk would like to Have a few minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention and I guess you can hold yours up just so people can see. So you will be seeing these around town. Please take a few minutes and just kind of glance over them. It does have quite a bit of election information on it. So on the left side of the flyer, that's the elections for the 2022 year. And there are four elections this year. Just want to bring that to people's attention as well as City manager Rico Gave the presentation earlier and discussed the redistricting. If you go to the my vote website, which is put together by the Wisconsin, the state of Wisconsin election commission. So it's all very valid, very current information. It has a ton of information That is available to voters that you can register on there. You can request an apps and T ballot. It will also tell you what is on your ballot, where you report for your polling location. And on this flyer, we've also included a little QR code that if you scan it with your phone, it takes you directly to the website. Thank you.
And Candace, would you review? We have some voting location changes this year?
Correct. Yes. So Once again, if you if you do scan this and it'll, you can click on there, where is my voting location? It'll tell you exactly where to go, complete with a photo as well. But we, the change that we've made is that districts one and two Are reporting to the Broski Center. So it'd be the two northern districts reporting to the Broski Center at the north end of town. And the two south districts, which are three and four, are reporting to the Alzwick Center on the UW Plattville campus.
Yeah. As Candace has noted, you can go to my vote and be directed to that too. And I'm sure that we'll have additional information on our own website.
We do. Yes.
Likely have some kind of information in the newspaper relative to that. Let's move down on to reports. There were several in our packet. We had a community safe routes committee report. Jason, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Library board Lynn. Museum board Eileen.
I would just also remind people that the lyceums are starting in February and you can again, go to the museum website and you can sign up for those. And they're all virtual, so you can stay home on a cold night like this and still see the program.
Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee, Jason.
Nothing to add.
And the Historic Preservation Commission, Ken.
No additions.
Okay, that completes the reports. We'll move on now to the action items. The first of this of these is the kennel relocation proposal request for 345 Bailey Avenue. Adam.
Yes, so just kind of recapping what was discussed the last council meeting. So again, during Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 common council meeting, the council made the determination to deny The conditional use permit for a business kennel for the property located at 345 Bailey Avenue. As the staff note indicates, after that decision was made, I was contacted obviously by the property owner, Mr. Daniel Winch Regarding inquiring about kind of next steps and not being able to actually come into compliance, starting on January 1st. So the staff note obviously provides kind of a timeline of some of the conversations that occurred In which the option that was discussed with Mr. Winch was to provide a proposal that could be presented to the council In regards to kind of some options and alternatives, either for him to come into compliance or look into other options for relocating to another location. So obviously during the Tuesday, January 11th, common council meeting, the council members had the opportunity to hear from Mr. Winch In regards to his proposal request and also had an opportunity to review the information submitted. So just kind of going into the budget and fiscal impacts again and summarizing. Per Mr. Winch's attached proposal, he has requested the city of Platteville consider two options to provide him with financial assistance. The proposals range in financial assistance between 725,000 to 3.3 million, $200,000. During the January 11th common council meeting, council members were provided with a hypothetical borrowing scenario in the range of $3 million. The scenario showcased to the council, the borrowing would be secured and paid back over the course of 15 years. It's anticipated with an interest rate of 3.25%. The total interest would be in the range of 731,250. Due to Mr. Winch's proposal, not providing any form of tax relief to the city of Platteville As the properties listed would be located outside of the city. It is estimated the entire cost would have to be furnished obviously by city taxpayers. The impact on the city tax rate at this time is obviously unknown because depending on the property or depending on any financial incentives, et cetera. That could change, but the estimates do range between 36 cents to 52 cents per year, Which would be on top of the any potential increase to fund the overall yearly city operations. So again, just to try to provide some financial historical information, the city typically borrows between one to $2 million annually To fund road improvement projects. This request would be the equivalent of two years worth of street repairs for the city of Platteville. So if the common council wishes to fund one of these proposals Without increasing the tax rate, it would require the potential reduction or loss of city services. So that's obviously something that if this would be continued, We would have to really review how the city would be able to financially cover this cost and what potentially would either have to be increased Or what service would have to be delayed or reduced in order to accommodate this. So obviously, when we hit the recommendation point, due to the financial hardship this proposal would have on the city of Platteville And the potential precedent it would create, obviously funding projects outside of the city limits, which would not create a tax based return. I, as the city manager, can't recommend the common council move forward with Mr. Winch's proposals. As the city manager indicated, I indicated I'm unable to grant any further extension For Mr. Winch to gain compliance with the city of Platteville's municipal code without council approval. I've obviously already granted an extension that occurs at the end of this month, obviously with everything that occurred with the denial. As stated previously, the decision the common council made to deny the conditional use permit application for Mr. Winch was not based solely on being able to meet the municipal requirements. During a public hearing, residents and neighbors abutting and adjacent to Mr. Winch expressed their concerns with nuisance issues Which the council members had to take into consideration and should continue to take into consideration if there's a further extension is granted. The council will want to consider if they wish to extend Mr. Winch's ability to come into compliance with the city of Platteville's municipal code. When the municipal code was updated on May 6, 2020, it did allow for a license holder to have one additional year to gain compliance Or consider alternative options if they if their desire was to continue to run a kennel operation. If the kennel was still not in compliance after that period, the licensee may request additional one year licenses from the council upon showing of cause. As talked about during the January 11th common council meeting, Mr. Winch did indicate they have purchased a property outside of the city of Platteville, Which could be utilized for future operations. As council members, you will have, you will need to determine if this warrants enough to great and grant an extension Of his license for any period in time. So as indicated, the current deadline to gain compliance expires Monday, January 31st at 11:59 PM. If an extension is not granted, I will be directing staff to conduct enforcement compliance procedures effective February 1st. So obviously what has been put in here is the kennel relocation proposal that Mr. Winch presented at the January 11th meeting as well as the staff notes.
Okay, any questions by council members of our city manager? Okay, Mr. Winch has registered to speak. So we will hear from him.
Hello, Dan Lynch is my name. 345 Bailey Avenue is my address. I would like to make one clarification right away. Adam was mentioning that it would Be a $3 million investment that he was looking at, but in my proposals, none, none of those proposals would request a $3 million. The highest would be 3.2 million. However, we were suggesting that we've 500,000 of that. So that would be 2,700 or so or 6.7, 2.7 million or so. So it'd be less than the numbers that Adam was mentioning. So I wanted to make that clarification right away. So that being said, yes, I did submit a proposal here. We are currently in a situation where the city is denying our Business count proposal or license. We originally filed a Private kennel license approval. And that was denied by the licensing committee, saying that we needed to change it to a business kennel to get that To go through council and along with that, the conditional use permit. It was also said that we couldn't Um, it was also said that, uh, we could not be grandfathered in when this ordinance was created back in 2020 because it was a licensing issue and not a, uh, zoning issue. Um, and because of that, we were not grandfathered in. Um, in speaking with council, uh, I also sought legal, legal counsel on this. Because the licensing not only changes the life, the, the rules that are applying in the licensing, not only changes those, but also changes the, um, land rights along with that. It is actually by definition, not only a licensing issue, but it is also a zoning issue. And in a zoning issue, kind of in a zoning change, existing places not only can be grandfathered in, but must be grandfathered in. So along with, um, along those lines, I am formally resubmitting, uh, to the common council my, uh, request for a private kennel license at my address, uh, going forward under the previous, uh, ordinance as it was written. Um, however, if the council does not wish, uh, to, to, um, go forward with that, even though legally, um, you would be bound to. Um, I do have two proposals here, uh, that we can discuss, um, that would allow for us to be able to move outside of the city. Um, and those being the, um, building on the land that, uh, we have outside of the city. And I did provide lots of information in here. Essentially, um, that one would be the better, uh, option, I believe, uh, if we were to look at relocating it, uh, in that it would be able to, uh, provide, uh, services to the citizens of Platteville and we would be purchasing products, um, purchased here in Platteville. People who would be coming, uh, to town, uh, would be purchasing things here in Platteville and, and enhancing the, uh, the commerce here in Platteville. As we grow, I'm sure that eventually we will hire additional people, which would also, uh, help the city of Platteville. The other option is potentially a little cheaper depending on which property we can actually find that is available. And we'd have to work quickly on that one and work together because properties don't stay on the market for very long. Um, as Isaac noted, these, some of these properties that were called out here have already sold. Um, so we would need to find appropriate properties and work together quickly in order to be able to, uh, pin down, uh, exact properties that we could, uh, have the city purchase and then sell to us for a dollar. And at that point, we could relocate to those properties. Then outside of that one is of course, we would not necessarily be here within the city of Platteville or the city, uh, the school district of Platteville and therefore not serving, serving Platteville any longer. But it would get our, our kennel outside of the city limits, which seems to be the goal of the common council. So if the common council does wish to, um, ask us to move our kennel, those are the two options. If the common council does not wish to have us move, here is my proposal, here my, um, license request for my private kennel license to continue doing our, uh, kennel in a non-commercial fashion as we have successfully for the last number of years. I don't, who, who, who do I hand this to? Candace? So I'll hand this to Candace when I go sit down.
Anybody with a question? Question?
I'm honestly confused now because the zoning to, from what you're saying, are forcing the private lot, um, no, I don't have.
Yeah, do you have a question?
I have no questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Okay, folks, this is on for some type of action. Uh, the, uh, record, the proposal was that the city would pay, uh, and provide financial assistance, uh, between, I don't know, anywhere from 700 to 3 million, 2 million. So, uh, how do you want to, uh, what is the action on this?
Are we voting separately on the proposal and the license extension or would that be all in one?
The license, you mean if?
The extension or whatever.
Beyond January 30th.
I would say you have, you have.
That would be two.
That'd be two separate. So the first thing you need to decide as a council, and I don't think you want to put it as a number. If the question that is in front of you is, do you want to provide a financial incentive, which essentially is going to be using taxpayer dollars to fund a proposal outside of the city? That, that's how, that's the first thing you have to determine. If you are going to do that, then that is going to direct staff in a different direction. After that decision is made, if you're, you know, then there has to be the discussion of, irregardless of what you do with that decision, you still had, there still has to be a discussion about an extension as to whether or not you want to grant that. If you do, then essentially the question is, how long do you want to grant that extension? If not, then essentially right now, it is ending January 31st at 11:59 PM is when that extension of that license is no longer in effect.
Okay, folks, so the first.
But, but he can ex- extend under the lower numbers. Do I get that correct? Are you saying that he?
If he complies with the ordinance, he would have to get down to the requirement of what it, what is allowed within the space, which I believe right now is for animals, for dogs. Right.
And also I want to point out that I got a phone call today that somebody said that they were in opposition to this kennel, a nearby neighbor.
Opposition to the kennel or opposition?
Opposition in general.
Opposition in general.
Yes.
Okay.
And I do not believe it should be located there.
And I believe you all received a forward from Joe. Joe got an, uh, message from a resident who had spoken against the kennel, but now has, uh, further spoken and saying, providing financial assistance for somebody to locate a business that, you know, to expand their business is really, uh, I, I think she pointed to her daughter, her daughter needing to expand her business and having to save to do that. So I think you all have that too. So the first question is, are you, uh, is somebody going to suggest, make a motion that we either do or do not provide financial assistance for Mr. Winch to locate, to relocate his business outside the city of Platteville or within the city of Platteville?
I'd make a motion, make a motion to deny the request for the city to provide any financial assistance for the kennel, excuse me, the kennel relocation, whether it be outside or within the city of Platteville.
Okay, okay, we have a motion in a second to deny any financial assistance for the relocation of the kennel, whether it occurs within or outside of the city of Platteville. Any questions on that motion? Then Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now folks, uh, Mr. Winch's current uh, ability to operate expires Monday, January 31 at 11:59 PM. It would take a motion of the council to allow an extension of that time period. And, uh, so the question is, is there, uh, does there support or not support for that? And if so, how much? Okay, Kathy?
Um, I would be in favor of extending the current time period license for a period of no longer than three months. Because it's my understanding that there's puppies do, um, anytime. It takes eight weeks for them to home with the cold weather. Um, I, I could understand a three-month extension.
Okay, so that would be, uh, that would be May first, April 30th. Are you making a motion to that regard?
Yes.
I could, might make a statement first. So we'll make sure that this is for the private kind of license, which means that no boarding of other people's dogs going on premises or any other commercial will be his, his own, his own animals, because he doesn't have cats as well.
I agree. And his private kennel license beyond the Monday, January 31st, 11:59 period to April 30th, 2022 at 11. So Kathy has made the motion. And we have a second from Eileen. So Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
No.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item then tonight, which is, uh, peak program and the senior center van. And this would take a budget amendment. So, uh, Howard?
I'll start quickly and, uh, then turn it over to John for, uh, for clarification and questioning. Uh, I wasn't sure if you were gonna go to the podium or not. Um, initially, uh, um, I had some facts incorrect here. Uh, senior center is looking to purchase an additional vehicle, uh, for handicapped accessibility for, for the members of the community. They've been doing fundraising and their intent is to use, uh, half of the, uh, up to 30,000 from donations and 30,000 from the sale of the former senior center building. Um, we, at the last, uh, meeting, we were, we had a question regarding whether enterprise could procure and lease a vehicle to the city. They have, uh, been able to locate a base vehicle that could be converted. And we do have some costs and, and everything to be considered. One of the other things that needs to be considered is that the 2022 ordering window is closed. Um, so there are no more 2022 vehicles to be had. Um, so if, if the decision is to purchase a vehicle, then we would need to, uh, hold the funding until, um, until the next year, the 2023 ordering window opens sometime. We, we expect it to be like late summer or early fall, so that then we would have a 2023 vehicle approximately a year later. If we wanted a vehicle sooner than that, then the only way that I know of to do that at this point would be to use the lease option. But we've had conversations regarding, uh, donations and whether or not they should be used for leases. So I'll turn it over to John for additional clarifications.
Um, so John Minding, Senior Center Manager, uh, are there any specific questions you'd like me to answer? Any concerns about, I know there's been some communications from some of our donors, I believe, to council members as well as city staff expressing that potentially leasing versus purchasing. Yep.
My question is, how needy is the next vehicle? How soon do you want it?
The, the urgency here, um, and I should have been clearer about this to begin with. The urgency is not for us to take possession of a vehicle. It's for us to be in a position to kind of pounce on the ordering window due to, you know, supply chain issues and things like that. Uh, it's more difficult than usual to get vehicles in general and perhaps particularly a vehicle of this type. So I, it's not, if the van arrived on our doorstep tomorrow, you know, between COVID and winter, you know, we would not use it until summer anyway. And given the other complicating factors, I would, uh, my personal opinion would be to wait, uh, until we can do it in a way that satisfies all parties involved, um, instead of, uh, assuming that there's some urgency to have the van right now. We do have a minivan, which we will keep and which we use, uh, currently. So this is, uh, an additional vehicle that would be used really for day trips and, uh, transporting groups of people, uh, as opposed to how we use our minivan, which is, has a lot to do with meal delivery and transporting people to and from the center. So low urgency, uh, plenty of patience on our part.
So John, is this a vehicle that would be owned by the Platteville area senior support group, pass the 501(c)(3) and maintained by them?
No, so this would be city-owned. We did explore, um, initially the idea of our friends group pass, uh, purchasing the vehicle. There were some questions about how that would affect their nonprofit status because they took the, I don't know if you're familiar with that whole, how you get the 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, but there is a so-called easy route, which places some limitations on how much money you can bring in in any given year. And there's possible disqualification for going over that limit. Uh, there are also just some, they do a wonderful job for us, but there are some additional sort of just administrative and bookkeeping concerns. It's an informal group, uh, that does a lot of broad sales. Possession of a van and perhaps somehow leasing it to the senior center or allowing use of it may add some administrative complications for them, so.
So, uh, Adam, uh, a vehicle would have, I mean, I know we bid out or, or we put a request for proposal or something out for police cars, so they have to be, there's a spec sheet or something developed. How would that work?
Yeah, so essentially what, I mean, there's a couple of, as we said, there's multiple facets to this kind of conversation. So realistically, now knowing that, you know, there is, there has been a certain amount of funds that have been specifically earmarked for a van. There's a couple of ways we can approach this as a city. Now, one is obviously because the city is going to be taking ownership of this. There are some budgetary complications or considerations that are going to have to be made. And I think, you know, we've talked with John about that. I think, you know, that's been some of the conversations that they're going back and forth is you gotta consider, okay, if the city is taking ownership of this van, irregardless if it's owned or leased, there is going to be routine, you know, there's going to be gas that you're going to have to do with it. There's going to be routine maintenance that's going to have to be done. There's going to be vehicle insurance. So right now in the 2022 budget, that's not there. So the question would be, if we're able to get a vehicle now in 2022, we have no funding mechanism. We have the funding mechanism to purchase it, but we don't have the funding mechanism to cover any of those possible, you know, maintenance, gas or insurance. Now, that would be the thing that we would have to consider is that's going to be a budgetary amendment. And that gets complicated. When we do budgetary considerations, we want to, you know, we want to do that all at the same time where we're looking at every single consideration the city is looking at when we're doing a budget. So I think we have a couple of avenues, you know, hearing that there isn't, you know, it's not something that needs to happen tomorrow. We have a couple of options. We essentially could put this in as a 2023 CIP project. Knowing if the funds are there, you know, we could potentially go out to bid and see, is there one available? You know, that doesn't mean that you have to purchase it. You're going out for bids. So you're looking to see, you know, possibly, because who knows, maybe there is a 2022 that is out there that we're not aware of. We don't know. Um, you know, we've done some due diligence and talking to a couple of, you know, options. We looked through enterprise, which is the leasing agency. They possibly could secure one. Um, you know, there's the possibility, I think I've heard that maybe there are some that are out there. But I think those are all the things that we need to look at. So that's kind of the question that we have. If this is not something that, you know, we have to jump at tomorrow, then maybe we, you know, my recommendation would be, let's step back a little bit. Let's look at the overall planning. Because there are, there are legitimate concerns. If we're hearing from donors that, you know what, they really do not want to lease this vehicle. We have to take that into account because if their huge donation was based on that and now that's gone, well, do we have the proceeds to go get this vehicle? Maybe, maybe not. You know, I think there are also some questions about leasing that we may need to have further conversations with some of those donors to listen to their concerns. You know, the main reason we went to a leasing program or we're trying that out right now on a trial basis is so that we can continue to have vehicles that are always under warranty, you know, are always going to be the most up to date and newest in regards to safety standards, everything else. Whereas with purchasing a vehicle, as you all know, after you hit that three-year period, you are crossing your fingers. You know, or you're crossing your fingers in regards to some of those extended warranties. So there's pluses and minuses, obviously, to leasing versus purchasing. And obviously, when we have donors that I think have indicated their initial intention was that they were going to purchase it. I think have indicated their initial intention was that they were going to purchase it. You know, I don't know if we want to pull that trigger right away by saying, hey, we're going to go to leasing. You know, now kind of hearing the concerns, we can do a little bit more due diligence and looking into a budget, you know, we can do an RFP if we want, look for that. We can hear from other possible vendors that are out there and kind of do this. And then that's the issue. I guess that would be my recommendation to the council is that, you know, we look at if we have the ability to kind of delay and make sure we do our due diligence and look at, okay, what is the budget? Because I think that would be a question for Pass as well as if we're talking about, you know, if from the city financial standpoint, if we can't take on some of those costs, is Pass okay with that? You know, is that something that there, I know we've had, kind of had conversations back and forth about that, about potentially who that would be, but I think we could do some, do a little bit more due diligence and looking into those numbers before, you know, before we have to pull a trigger.
And one of the things, so that's, that sounds good. I do have somebody else who wanted to speak on this tonight. So does anybody else have any questions of John? Ken?
Well, my question is for both city manager and for the senior center. What struck me was that in the January eleventh meeting, it said that we could go out to purchase. And then we come along to this meeting two weeks later and says, well, we, we've passed the window as far as purchase. Well, my question is, when was the window open?
So the answer to that question is we were not sure. So the window, we never knew would close or not. So if we go out to RFP, we had no idea if anybody would come back and say, hey, we have a vehicle available. What we were starting to hear was that when we talked to organizations, I think where John originally got a quote, was that, you know, those quotes were back in, I think, November of last year when we started to pull that information. While some of the issues we heard is the original quote person, you know, the original quote we got, which was from Pioneer Ford, was we passed that window to order a vehicle. So they may, you know, again, it kind of comes with if they have one available, it's on the market. So at that point in time, we didn't know. So what we were hearing was that the window had closed. There was the potential we could possibly get a two thousand and twenty-two, but if not, we would be looking at a two thousand and twenty-three or potentially later with everything going on.
But, but the window, did it close for just Pioneer Ford and local? How about other people?
No. So that's where.
Well, I, I think, Ken, part of this is that we can't go to, go to a single vendor. I think this is an RFP process that has to be put out. So we don't know if other windows are open or closed.
I understand that. And you have to go out and have bids.
Right.
So Pioneer Ford necessarily won't get it.
That's part, right. What we were hearing was there were concerns from some of the vendors where we're reaching out to that either there was not one available or that their window had closed because of everything they've been dealing with shortages and, you know, and the market that you may not be able to get one. Now, it's very possible if we go out for RFP, if that's the choice we want to make, that we could get, we could get somebody to say, hey, we have one that actually is on the market today and it's this. That could change. But what we've been hearing so far is it is extremely difficult right now and the likelihood would be we'd be looking at two thousand and twenty-three.
And what we've heard also, at least the council, is that the vendor, which is a significant, not a vendor, but a contributor, may withdraw the contribution.
Correct. If we go with, if.
I might say this, that my wife said to me, well, if this is how they're going to operate as far as going to lease route, she may withdraw her contribution as well. It is, it is a significant contribution. So.
Yeah, that's correct. I believe you both.
How are you gonna come up with all this?
I, I believe you've all seen the communications from our, the gentleman who kind of kicked this off as a parting gift to the senior center. And I have not talked to absolutely everybody who's donated, but anecdotally, the handful of people who are aware of this issue, who have approached me are, for better or worse, universally against leasing. It was not the intent of their donation. And, you know, beyond that, I can't speak to, you know, some people see the mic leases, some people don't. But yeah, leasing at this point, making a decision to lease would really go against the intentions of a majority of the donations we've received. And now whether people would want to, with all those donations, I don't know. I could see some being restricted for use. This still benefits the center, but is not used for the van. But yeah, that would be another.
I would like the person who registered to speak on this to be able to come to the podium. So thank you, John. And Stacy? Is that right? Stacy Gangler from Kunis Commercial is here to speak.
Hey y'all. Stacy Gangler, Commercial Sales Manager, Kunis. Fourteen years, formerly Uber Socks. I think probably answered the majority of those questions. There are still obviously product availability for a few of the manufacturers at least. I've got stuff, I've probably got fifty vans inbounder there are being currently built access to, you know, as far as setting up one as a, as a, in fact, I mean, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-five. I did all the stuff for City of Phoenix. I did the fire department. Okay, quite a bit experienced in this. We do a lot of handicap accessible vehicles, both small scales. I work directly with like Waldo, Rolex, all the manufacturers Braun. Is there, there are both Ford and, and Ram products I know that are available to me. I could actually quote both of those. And I do have some sheets here that have pricing, so kind of give you a round and about idea what, you know, what you're talking about for budget wise. You know, as far as that goes. Do you have any specific questions regarding like timelines or cost or?
I, I don't. I mean, I don't, Adam, do you?
No, I mean, I think the, the, the question that kind of comes up tonight, so that, that's great news to hear that there are options out there. I think the question that would be up for the council tonight is obviously what we're looking for from staff is kind of what direction do you want us to move forward with? So we can certainly go out for, I think the, the process would be, we would be going out for an RFP. I think the intention would be at this point and kind of hearing everything, the recommendation would be that this would be a purchase versus the lease. And that would be our intention is we would be going out for an RFP to see who could build that. When we get those back, that's the conversations basically we can have, not only as a council, but also with Pass as in regards to, okay, what's available currently now that we could get? What's the timeline? And then we can review kind of the cost. You know, if that doesn't work, then we look, again, it's a, it's a process. That doesn't mean by taking those, you have to agree to those. You can decide, you know what, financially it doesn't make sense. And we can continue to work with Pass then and budget it for two thousand and twenty-three to include the insurance, everything else you can think of so that everything's there. So that would kind of be, I think, hearing this news, you got some options is we certainly could go out for RFP and see what happens. And then that could be brought back to the council and also reviewed with the, the senior center staff as well.
All right. So the direction that you would suggest would not be to deal with. Cindy, you wanted to speak for informational purposes on this?
Before we get to Cindy, if I could ask, so I asked Stacy to be here or stop here. So even staff and John to get together with them and go look at the vans. I sent them a picture, which I was, she's kind of just a vacationer. So it kind of gets an idea, but kind of get a more general idea, you know, before we start doing the, the numbers to actually what it is going to actually, actually cost. You know, it's awesome. You know, Adam brings a number us to say, we need fifty thousand dollars. We've got thirty thousand donations. Awesome. Stacy or whoever comes up and says, well, no, that van's going to be seventy thousand based on how you want that van. In effect, that knowing the network that they have, whether it be for the Ram, Dodge, Ford, knew that they probably could get a vehicle sometime this year. So that's why I asked them to come here. So.
Oh, thank you.
I also worked in, in the procurement of the, of the Dodge Grand Caravan they have now. I work directly. I'll get it put together, but we stayed after until we got it done. And I, obviously I can see where there might be a little growth. We tried to lower the cost of ownership by going to something that size at that time. Certainly I can see why, why we're looking at something a little bigger, so maybe handicap accessible. So.
Yeah, I think it's real important to outline what this van might be or what this vehicle might be. And I think it's important to talk about all the costs associated with it, not just a purchase cost, because I think we see when we buy vehicles for the city, all of a sudden we have a vehicle, but then we have another forty-two hundred or sixty-four hundred dollars that gets put on that vehicle for whatever reason. So I'd like to see personally full costs and also warranties. I mean, my understanding is these warranties are, okay. So thank you, Stacy, for coming and thank you, Isaac, for making him aware. Cindy, would you like to speak on the senior van?
City Tang, nine nine five, Highbury Circle. I hadn't planned to speak on this tonight, but I was surprised that the van hasn't been ordered. I wrote a grant for funding of the senior van, I think more than a year ago, that was funded and we were told at the time that it had been ordered. So I'm pretty surprised. It was a PEO help grant. And they've received the money because I said it was ordered, because I was told it was ordered. So I think it's really important to communicate with your donors. You know, we ask organizations for money and they're funded and then all of a sudden, over a year later, to hear that it hasn't been ordered is, is a shock. So I feel I represent the donors.
I understand. And I've actually asked for the number of donors and actually what they were asked to give. I haven't, I'm sure I'll receive that, but the number of donors and total amount given for the purchase of a van would be.
I believe PEO funded it at about three thousand dollars. I'm, you know, I'd have to go back and look, but it was more than a year ago, I believe. And there has been no communication since.
Thank you. Okay, folks. We have this peak program in senior fan, van budget amendment. I'm not sure that we're to the point where we can make a budget amendment yet.
No, I think just to summarize again, what, the option that you have is essentially, yeah, you can, you know, table this until you want us to go further or as it says, you can direct staff to move in a certain direction. So I think one of the options that would be, would be to direct staff to potentially, you know, two things we'd be looking at, going out for an RFP to see what would be available this year, if there is anything, we can do that. But then also too, looking at, as indicated in the two thousand and twenty-three budget, we could start that process now where this would be included as a capital item, you know, with all and be very specific on, as you indicated, Barb, the funding sources. Let's look at, you know, potential expenses, insurance costs, and then also further discussions about the revenue that could be offset as, you know, John kind of indicated where we're hopeful that in two thousand and twenty-three, we'll be able to do some more trips, more opportunities. So potentially that could be, you know, something that could be taken into that account of what would be the total cost.
Kathy? I have a comment. I'm, I would like to see us move in the direction of getting all the costs together. I am not, at this point, in favor of going down the route of leasing. Couple of things that come to my mind is we need to, people made donations in good faith. And we also have the, a local business who in good faith worked with this group to purchase this vehicle. And they've been negotiating for three years. And based on actions that we took two weeks ago, and I feel especially a part of, like, I'm part of the problem because I'm the liaison to that commission. I was not aware of the full history of that van. So I couldn't speak to it two weeks ago. But it's my understanding that the local business, when we made the decision last week to direct staff to maybe look at leasing, the local business was really surprised to see an RFP come to them on their own letterhead.
RFP.
And, and that's how they found out about it. So you talk about, no matter what way we do this, we need to do it the right way. And people's perception of how the city does things, we're not, even as council people, totally aware of exactly the processes. And sometimes we say things that have unintended consequences. So I guess my point is that I would like us to continue on with the, with the idea that we had these very generous people that made donations for something for the senior population that they wanted. It's not often a group comes to the city and says, we've raised money for this. We're not asking for city tax dollars, but it's something we need. I just think the whole thing warrants the best reaction that the city can, can come up with as we move forward.
So folks, do we want a motion that says we want the city to continue to pursue this vehicle by developing an RFP? And coming up with the total cost of the project? And after we see total cost, then we can talk about budget?
That's something that would be in line with what Kathy was talking about in terms of like the donations and kind of what was intended in the first place?
I assume so.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, if you're directing us to go for an RFP, we're going for the purchase. You know, that would be the intention of, we'd be purchasing it, we'd be going out and asking, you know, as, again, as a city, we have to do diligence, we have to get multiple quotes and procedures and see what comes back. And then that's the question for you as a council is, and also in conversation with the donors is, okay, what is the, here's, you know, what we received and either we can do something in two thousand and twenty-two, or if we feel it's better financially for all parties to wait and do the same thing again in two thousand and twenty-three, then we do that.
Right. And, and the proposed amendment originally was for sixty thousand dollars. We don't actually know if that's what it would be anyway. So I think we need to have a full, a full look at what that would be. I mean, originally this was told to be a replacement vehicle, but it's not a replacement vehicle. It's an additional vehicle. So I guess that we should have staff pursue a total proposal that would, at this point, include purchase. But maybe not this year.
We're.
We need the proposal back before we can talk about whether there's a purchase or not.
Correct.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the staff to continue to develop this proposal and accompanying documents relative to costs of acquiring a vehicle. I'm not sure I even know how big this vehicle is supposed to be, if it's supposed to carry ten people, twenty people or forty people. But I guess that's another thing that needs to be clarified is what size is this vehicle? So I'm assuming the next time we see this, it'll come back with all of those kinds of specifics.
Got it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the staff to pursue getting this detail in order, including potential costs. And a second. So Candace will, did we have us? Yeah, we have a motion and a second. So we'll vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda. We're done with action items for tonight. So the next item on our agenda is the Runde Chevrolet driveway, and I'm turning this to Adam.
Yes. So just to kind of give an update on this, we did receive a kind of circumstance of a claim from Rundis on this. So what is going to happen now is now that we have received that, we will be forwarding that information, obviously, to our insurance company and they will start a review. So what I would ask the council to do is essentially to table this until the insurance company has had a chance to kind of investigate everything in regards to this matter. And then what will happen is the insurance company will come back with a. And then what will happen is the insurance company will come back with a formal kind of recommendation that then will be brought back to the council in which then at that time you will have the ability to kind of either accept that recommendation, whether it's in for or against. Or you then, as the council, can obviously go against that recommendation and go in a different direction. So at this point in time, what will be happening is I've already sent that information to our insurance. They have received it, they're starting the process and they'll be working obviously with our staff as well as potentially getting in contact with Rundis and their, you know, staff and legal staff and kind of reviewing this situation further. So that is the recommendation.
In that it's a legal action, we will not have any discussion on this tonight. I would ask that any council member that has a question about this to talk privately with Adam about it. And so we will then go to the next agenda item, which is the inclusive playground financial request. And that would be Adam.
Yes. So at the Monday, January 17th Park Forestry and Recreation Committee meeting, members from the Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee were in attendance. Christina Burr of the organization gave a presentation on the status of their efforts thus far. It is anticipated Christina will be in attendance, and I think I see her hiding over there during the January 25th, 2020 council meeting to provide a similar presentation to the council members. So Community Development Director Carol, with the assistance of other city staff members, submitted a community development block grant request to the Department of Administration on Thursday, January 13th, 2022. The grant included a total project request amount of $2,221,970. The project has three components, an inclusive playground to be constructed in Smith Park, a sidewalk slash path to be constructed along Second Street from Legion Park North and connecting to a path being constructed by the Platteville Township, and new parking facilities in Smith Park and Legion Park that connect to the sidewalk path and support the inclusive playground. If the city of Platteville were to receive this funding, the anticipation is construction would start in spring of 2022 and the entire project would be finalized by December of 2023 at the latest. Hopefully it wouldn't take that long, but you never know. During the presentation, the Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee indicated that when they are approached, donors for possible, when they approach donors for possible financial contributions, the number one question being asked is what the city has financially pledged towards this project? Even if the city is successful in getting community development block grant with 100% funding, some items cannot be funded by the grant, such as upgrades to the bathrooms in the Stone Shelter. So before I go into the budget and fiscal impacts, I'm going to let Christina kind of give her presentation because I think then when she ends it, I can kind of step back in and kind of walk you through kind of the budget and potential fiscal impacts and we'll go from there.
Perfect. Thank you, Adam. Christina Burr, 6826 Woodland Road. And first I just want to say thank you to the council for voting in favor of the Platteville Inclusive Playground. Your support really does show the community that you value inclusiveness, and so we're grateful for that. We're also thankful Adam and Howard have been fantastic in working with us. Delta Three and Dan, Inspiring Community. It's been really awe inspiring to see the leaders of this community stepping up and working hard towards this goal. So we thank you. So this is kind of our brief update. You probably wonder what we've been up to since you voted in favor of the project in November. And the answer is a lot. Our volunteer committee has been working really hard on several facets of the project. One, we're in phase one of fundraising, which means that we've gone through fundraising training with Inspiring Community. We've developed our donation level recognition opportunities. We're meeting individually with donors, with businesses. We're also reaching out to service organizations in the community, sharing the information with them. And we are also applying for grants, one of which is the grant Adam just mentioned. And then we've already applied for two others and we have at least five more in the pipeline that we're working towards applying to as well. In addition to that, we have our marketing team developing our branding so that as we reach out to the community, we have a very recognizable brand that is associated with the Platteville Inclusive Playground. And we also have a team that's working on educating the community through newspaper articles, just sharing about what is inclusiveness, what is this playground going to bring to the community? And how is it going to enhance our community as well? So those articles will be coming out over the next several months as well. We're also in communication with the playground equipment design companies, moving forward with those preliminary designs that they created for us. We've now prioritized our high, our, the importance of our equipment. So we've stratified that and reached back out to the companies to have them modify it. And so I'll show you a picture too. We've also been working with the layout of the, now that we know it's in Smith Park, we've gone back, we've met with Delta Three, we've met with Mo Peters from the city and looked tree to tree and really looked at the space so that we can minimize impact on any trees there and also create the best layout for that space. So those are just a few of the things that we've been up to since we saw you last. Those are the three grants that have been applied for so far. Like I said, there are more in the works. These are just some of our high priority equipment selections that are on our list. There's that overview of where the general space in Smith Park will be centered across from the Stone Shelter where the current equipment is and the parking on the Fifth Street. The plan, as you know, is just to really upgrade Smith Park to make it completely accessible, to place inclusive playground there and to relocate that old equipment at the discretion of the city to other parks in town. So it really is a full, full encompassing project beyond just the playground itself. This is the updated vision. So rather than just being a straight rectangle, you'll notice that the shape really works around the flow of the trees there. And it also includes an attached covered pavilion where we would add accessible picnic tables as well to be right adjacent to the inclusive playground. Am I blocking your view, Isaac? We do have that plan for the three tier fundraising, so we'll have our minimum build, our better build and our ideal build. And then if we don't, for some reason, reach our, our minimum build, we would use any money on a smaller scale to advance inclusiveness in our parks. But I really feel hopeful and positive that we're going to reach our full goal of that ideal build. If we, for some reason, raise extra money, wouldn't that be fantastic? Our goal will be to start an endowment fund to help with future maintenance. So what are donors saying about the Platteville Inclusive Playground? Just to give you a little snippet of the response, it's been really amazing to see donors and their excitement for this project. We're so excited to be part of this project, a place where you can look in every child's eye and say that this park was built for you. It's awe inspiring to see the energy building behind this incredible project. What better way to show our children that everyone in our community has innate value than to invest in an inclusive playground? We're thrilled to support this wonderful Southwest Health, Southwest Wisconsin attraction that will allow for enjoyable positive motion for kids of all abilities and all ages. On behalf of our team and our clients, we thank you. And really what I love is that the donors really see the value that it's for everyone. It's not for any one subset. And that's a message that we want to continue to reach out to the community with is that it really is for all subsets and all members of our community and the surrounding communities as well. It takes a lot to get to that 2.2 million. That's why we're applying to grants and reaching out to donors and doing our fundraising. And I show you just some of our major contributors to date. We've had a lot of leaders in the community stepping up. This is just the shortlist. We've had in many additional donors as well. And we're thankful that we've gone over 100,000 in our fundraising so far. That includes taking time off around Thanksgiving and Christmas to be with our families. And so I'm really proud of our team and their efforts to reach that goal. We have developed donation recognition levels to really try to honor our donors and really try to represent their donation in a, a full fashion with the playground. I show you that just to let you know that we've really thought through every step of the process and have tried to be as thoughtful with the plan as we can. All of our donations can go through Inspiring Community for our individual donors and businesses. That's a great advantage for our donors and we're thankful to have that. We have made ourselves accessible to the community as well, both through our Facebook page, which we regularly communicate with the community as well as our email. And then our, our team members are very accessible as well. So what are we asking of you? Adam kind of hinted, we're here because we would like to see a commitment from the city on this project. You've already voted in favor of it. You've already voted in favor of the location. And this is where we're really asking you to commit to financially investing in the playground as well. The number one question we get from donors is what is the city going to invest in this? And I know we're applying for grants that may give us significant return and that's fantastic. But it's also not going to cover the whole project. And as a leader in the city, people look to the council to see what do you value? And does this project have value to you? Is it important? And one of the ways that you show it's important is by investing in it and being a leader in that investment. And I would ask the council to not only consider putting a commitment of 100,000 to the Platteville Inclusive Playground, but to ask you to do it without strings or commitment. There had been some previous conversations on, well, if we don't get the whole grant, then maybe we would do it. And we really can't have that. Or we would ask you not to have that. Because if you put a string or an attachment or qualification on your donation, then our other donors are going to fall right in place. And then we're going to have a whole string of donations with qualifications and if this, then that. And we really need just a full commitment, or we would ask for a full commitment so that you can lead the way and our donors can donate with confidence that you believe in this project and want it to come to life. We'd love that we have the full support of the school district too. Jim says it wonderfully when he says, when you, this playground will show our community and Southwest Wisconsin that we care about all of our children and that we want them to play together. And I think we're all on the same board with that. We can't wait to bring this to life. Our suggestion, and this will turn it back over to Adam here, but our suggestion would be to use park impact fees and park trust funds that we know are available that are off, many of them specifically for Smith Park enhancement and would in no way impact taxes. Our goal is to avoid any impact on taxes for you, any impact on your budget beyond using those trust funds and impact fees that are already there. And in my opinion, would be well served for a project of this type. I thank you for your time and I'd answer any questions that you have.
Anybody with questions for Christina?
I have a question. One of the question, I mean, this is a question that I have been asked. And now that it's come out, I guess I'm not sure how to answer it to people. But the city just applied for a grant for 2.2 million? And that amount of money does not include the renovation of the bathrooms? So that, that's going to be, that to me is a.
Yeah, so part, yeah, so part of the, part of the grant process is that it could only be used towards new additions or new projects. So the renovation of an existing bathroom is, does not qualify per the qualifications of the grant. So it only can be the DOA grant, one of the stipulations was it had to be used towards new structures. So because of the fact that we'd be renovating a building, when we've met with them and asked that, they basically said that would not be eligible for the funding. So that's why it's, we wish it would have been, but.
And Kathy?
I, I just thought that was kind of.
And Kathy, that grant, that grant that was applied for is not only just for Smith Park, it also included Legion Field parking lot as well as the new sidewalk. So the 2.2 isn't just for the Smith Park. You have to make sure you take that into consideration as well. So there's two other portions that were included in that 2.2 million.
Correct. Even though our, our project is 2.2 million, which can make it confusing. The grant, the playground portion of the grant, Smith, at Smith Park was 1.9 million that the city requested. So there is a portion that regardless of whether or not we got that full grant money, which I think we would all be very ecstatic for, it still would not cover the full project. And so that's why we are making great efforts in our fundraising and asking the city to support it. Great question, okay.
Any other questions of Christina? Adam, then I'm going to turn it back to you.
Perfect. So I think one, just want to definitely give a shout out to Christina and the rest of the crew that's in attendance tonight for the work that you guys have done with this inclusive playground project. I think again, this is a testament to our community in the city of Platteville where when we have residents and individuals that are passionate about seeing something happen, it is amazing to see those efforts turn into an organization. I think, you know, since literally this kind of conversation started last year and to see that you guys have turned it into an organization that has been able to fundraise $100,000 really in the span of, we're talking about three weeks, I think is definitely a testament to you guys. So I think the kudos goes back to you, fellow. It's been a pleasure to work with you guys on this and we are hopeful definitely as city staff and I think that we find a way to get this thing to happen and we'll figure it out. You know, hopefully we can get what we need, but otherwise we'll make it work one way or another. So now comes the question, obviously with budget and fiscal impacts, you know, what can we do or how can this be provided? So as you heard, the Platteville Inclusive Playground Committee asked for the city of Platteville to pledge $100,000 to go towards this project with no conditions, qualifications or restrictions. As they said, the organization fears if conditions were placed on the pledge, it potentially could cause their donors to do the same. So the Park Forestry and Recreation Department currently manages several trust funds and endowment funds. These funds and accounts are not funded by taxpayers and carry over from year to year. This is often money collected for a specific purpose via either a grant or a donation. So there are restrictions in how these monies can be spent. In reviewing particular endowment and trust funds that could be utilized to assist with a pledge towards an inclusive playground, the following would be potential options for the council to consider. So we have the Oral Clayton Endowment Fund. This was established in 2015. This fund was gifted for the park and recreation program for the maintenance and improvement of Smith Park and Legion Park, Legion Field, as determined by the common council in the city of Platteville upon recommendations of the appropriate city staff. As of November 31st, 2021, there is currently 124,601.62 available, which could be utilized for a project. We also have the Cyril Clayton Endowment Fund, established in 2015. This fund was gifted for the park and recreation program for the maintenance and improvement in Smith Park and Legion Field, as determined again by the common council in the city of Platteville. As of November 31st, 2021, there is currently 35,417.50 available, which could be utilized for a project. We do have the Platteville Park Endowment Fund that was established in 2014. The primary purpose of this fund is to maintain, improve or expand city of Platteville Parks, Trails and other recreation facilities and programs. As of November 31st, there is currently 8,734 that is available, which could be utilized. We do have the Platteville Parks, I want to make sure, Benning, I believe, is the binding trust established in 2012. The primary purpose of this fund is to maintain, improve and/or expand city of Platteville Parks, Trails or other recreational facilities. As of December 31st, there is currently 21,488.94 available. And then it's indicated we do have park impact fees. So the city's municipal code includes regulations regarding parkland dedication requirements. Within the corporate limits of the city, subdivisions are required to dedicate sufficient land or essentially have to pay a fee in lieu. So as of December 31st, there is currently 46,764 that would be available, which could be utilized for a project. So looking into this, the recommendation, the Platteville Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee at their January 17th, 2020 meeting, made the recommendation the common council pledge $100,000 to come from one of several trust endowment accounts to go towards the Platteville Inclusive Playground project with no restrictions applied to the pledge. So city staff, after having a chance to review, would recommend the pledge of $100,000 to be utilized towards the Platteville Inclusive Playground project come out of the Oral Clayton Endowment Fund, as it is specifically designated for improvements to Smith Park and is the fund that currently has the most financial capacity to absorb the request. City staff would also recommend to assist in the fundraising efforts by the Platteville Playground Inclusive Committee, the pledge be authorized with no restrictions. So essentially what we would be looking for is a motion to, for the city of Platteville to pledge $100,000 to come out of the Oral Clayton Endowment Fund to be utilized with no restrictions towards the creation of an inclusive playground at Smith Park.
Okay, folks, questions? Kathy?
It's more of a question of, of procedure. I know in the past, without Luke here, you are, you're the go to person here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when the Broski Center was built, this wasn't their park fund monies to the tune of 50,000 that went to, went to the Broski Center? And then when the pickleball, was there any type of one of these endowments that was used? And then when the pickleball, was there any type of one of these endowments that was used for that?
Yes, so that has, these numbers are reflected with showing what has been taken out. So this is currently what's available to be utilized.
So then my question is, what criteria is used to ask for the dollar amount?
So.
Where did the hundred thousand come from? Because it would be setting a precedent for the next project. I guess I'm just wondering if there's a formula.
There isn't, yeah, there isn't technically a formula.
And let, let's go back. First of all, the city contribution to the Broski was a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Fifty thousand had been designated in a budget year to
Essentially seed money for.
Fixed art hall. So there was 50,000 that had been set aside. And when the Broski was built, then that 50 was redirected to the construction with an additional 50 given. So there was a hundred. I don't want anybody to.
Okay.
But 50 of that came from, how can pack fees, I believe, pardon? I, I don't know. I don't actually know where the money came from, but there were, there were two different times. Instead of a hundred thousand at once, it was 50. And I believe there was a budget carryover amendment that then put it into the next year or whatever, because there was this thought that we could somehow salvage and fix art hall.
But then Adam, is that sort of the way most municipalities run those? Do they not have an application or criteria?
No, so there, I mean, with anything with park impact fees or any type of donation, it is always at the, it's the opportunity of the, as it kind of says, these funds were donated to the discretion of the staff and the council. So it, you can, I mean, you have a choice. You can choose to do a hundred. You can do something less. That's up to you. So there is no, unless it's specifically stipulated that you can't, it's up to your discretion as a city. So those funds are there to be utilized towards, the restrictions are, as you can see with some of these, is the place. So it has to be used towards this. It has to be used towards X. There is no dollar amount. Now, could there be, have I been in some municipalities that had that? Yes. So there's some where, you know, it only allows $3,000 every year to come out of the endowment and you can't spend more than X. It just depends. But that's always at the, you know, for the most part, you don't want to put any restrictions because that's up to what's available. Now, obviously, as some of these accounts, if they continue to get less with like park impact fees, you're going to have to make a decision because if somebody comes in and says, okay, now, you know, I want this, if there's nothing left in there, you know, it, it's always that kind of balancing act. Because at the end of the day, you don't want to just have that money in there and all you're doing is sitting on it. Because the intention truly is that you are supposed to be using it for projects. But you also want to be cautious a little bit too of what that means. Is, that's not a bad thing. It means if you, if you spend the entire account, but then it's gone. And it's, you know, what are you doing? You're creating an amenity that, you know, hopefully for the next 50 to 100 years and continuing on into perpetuity is going to be there for every single city of Platteville resident and visitor moving forward.
In part respond to Kathy's question as well, because you probably wonder where we came up from with that number. And, and, and it was in part in looking at investments from the city to previous pros, projects like the Broski Center and Pickleball. But if, if you look at it that way, percentage-wise, you've invested anywhere from 10 to 17% in previous projects, if you're looking at the cost of the project. So cost-wise, percentage-wise, we're actually asking you for a much smaller percentage of the total investment than you've invested in other projects as a price comparison point, if you're going with percentages rather than the 50,000 or 100,000. So that's in part why we felt not only have you invested that much in other projects, but it's actually also a much smaller percentage of the total cost of the project. And on that, I've had many donors actually say, well, you should ask for more. That's not it. When you're looking at the size of this project, you should be asking for more even. But we felt like that hundred thousand was a reasonable ask, given the grants that we've also applied for. Other questions? Ken?
Yes. Bring a rope down here was upgrades to bathrooms and stone shelter. I'd like to find out if possible, prior to the next time, what it's going to cost to do the upgrades to the stone shelter. For the bathrooms.
I think Christina has that information now. Current estimate is a hundred thousand for the upgrades to the bathroom and that is changing it to two universal, single-use bathrooms or family-style bathrooms, meeting the ADA turning requirements required and having an infant-changing stable in one and in an adult-accessible changing table in the other.
What's the total cost?
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand for the bathrooms. So to me, the question comes up, if the bathrooms can't be included as far as being specified, then where's the money going to come from if we look at what the city has? So that's the question to me. Thank you.
The bathrooms could be included in the park impact fees and the park trust funds that the bathroom upgrade would be able to access those funds. So our general fundraising as well as the city's commitment to the project, the only thing that couldn't be used towards the bathroom was that one specific grant that we applied for. All other grant money, fundraising, donations, and city commitment, as far as I'm aware, would be able to fully fund any other portion of the project, including the bathroom remodel. So only one grant is restricted. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Sorry, excuse me. So I'm definitely in favor of the proposed amount that they've asked for as with the no restrictions applied to it. Because I believe that if you put restrictions on her, as she had stated that some of the donors that have now or you possibly could limit some of the donors in the future for that. The only thing I would probably not be in favor of is limiting the hundred thousand right out of the Oral Clayton Endowment Fund as we permit it to wind on that down to about 20% of what's there now of that. I think I would be more in favor of taking a little bit out of the Oral Clayton and maybe the Cyril Clayton Fund combined. There's 160,000 just between those two. And if not, maybe do a percentage wise out of each one of them, the five of us, because there's 237,000 between the five, who the five accounts are sitting there. So definitely in favor of it. I think it's a great project. Obviously, they put their time in it, the donations. I think we just maybe split up the money from the city portion of a little bit as, again, like I said, not to dwindle down the one account down to a pretty low amount.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think the clarification I can give you on that, Isaac, is that is the spendable amount that is in that trust. So there actually is quite a bit more that's in there. So although it would be going down to, you know, 24,000, every year there is a, you know, there's, with each of a lot of these accounts, there's a restricted amount and then there's the spendable amount. So that's the spendable amount. I think overall the total is about 395,000 is what is in that trust. But I get what you're saying. I think there's ways we can obviously do that. I think we just looked at this. We want a clean slate. That's the one account that has the most available and the most restricted that if we don't touch the rest of that restricted, you know, potentially it'll replenish that over the years.
I don't think you can touch the restricted.
No, you can't, but right. Yeah.
Okay, if there are no other questions, thank you Christina. And I think at least you have three more team members here. So thank you very much all for coming. Let us move on then to the Housing Authority Loan Proposal. And.
I can kick this one off, I guess, and then give it to Jen and the group. So as if you recall, within the first allotment of the ARPA funds, so the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which was about the 630,000 roughly that we got. We, when we did the work session and talked about, you know, potential opportunities for creating either grants or proposals, the Platteville Housing Authority came up. So one of that was, if you remember, there was $20,000 that was essentially set aside for the possibility to go to the Platteville Housing Authority for some type of either a grant or application process. So over the course of the last couple of months, the Housing Authority has been meeting and has been going over the potential of what that process could possibly look like. And that's what they're here to kind of present to you tonight. So now I will kick it over to them and let them kind of explain what, what's in front of you.
Thank you, Adam. I'm Joyce Boss. I live at 1590 West Gulf Drive. And I'm the Chair of the Platteville Housing Authority. And like Adam said, that you've been granted some money to use for the American Rescue Plan Act. And so the Housing Authority is asking that $20,000 be provided for deposit assistance. Our citizens that are low income or extremely low income need this assistance to help them acquire their rental properties. Typically, the security deposits are a month's rent and can range anywhere from 500 to 1,000. And what we're proposing is that the Housing Authority would grant the applicant $400 of that amount. The applicants would be reviewed by the Housing Authority on a monthly basis. And the funding would be administered by the Housing Authority. This assistance would be provided in two different ways. And we're going to leave this up to the council to decide. We've had a lot of discussion and we've had pros and cons. Well, pros mostly on both of these ideas. One way is that it would be repaid to the Housing Authority by the landlord when the tenant moves out. Or the second way is that it's not repaid and that it's a grant, a flat-out grant to the applicants. If assistance is repaid, the, the fund would be a revolving loan. And this way we would be able to help people in the future too. The Housing Authority would not request assistance to be repaid by the participant because this is going to be a hardship on the participant. I've had an opportunity to sit in on some intakes of citizens applying for assistance. And all of them are extremely low or low-income citizens applying for this. And one of them particularly pulled at my heartstrings. And she said that last summer she stayed as, as a seeking of refuge under the pines and behind the Broski Center through the summer. So you can see that our citizens need this type of help to get some housing. And this citizen also said that she's now working a minimum wage, 28-hour a week job. So she really doesn't have any opportunity to save up money for a double payment of the first rent and the last rent. I'm as, I'm urging the council to accept our request and review it and take action on it next month. The applicants that come to our Housing Authority, there's tears all the time. And it's tears of frustration of not being able to provide for their families and it's tears of relief that they might get some assistance. There's an application that we've put together that you've have in your package. And you can review that. And this time I'll take any questions.
Okay, questions of Joyce relative to the proposal? And my understanding is the proposal is to provide up to $400 to an applicant that is okayed? I don't know. Who is reviewed is?
Yes, they'd be reviewed and the application has to, to meet the standards of extremely low or low-income citizens. And as all of our applicants, they have to meet that standard plus a three-year criminal background check. And there's other preferences that allow priority in the, in the order that they're selected for housing.
And did, did I read somewhere, or am I crazy, that you said you would only do 10 of these a year?
Right. We would like to.
That's in the back part of it. So you're not crazy.
Oh, I'm like, where did I read that? Because I didn't read that. I'm looking at the staff notes. So if you look at the funding from the city, it says.
Yeah. Okay. We just wanted to be able to provide this for at least five years.
So this would be security deposits of up to $400, not necessarily $400 or always $400.
Always 400.
And it would be paid directly to the landlord.
Correct.
With the landlord expected to pay it back to the Housing Authority on move out.
That's one option. And the other option, if the, if the council chooses to give this as a grant, these are citizens that are seeking housing assistance. The American Rescue Plan Act allows for that to happen. And it could be given just as a flat grant.
Then it wouldn't be given to the landlord.
Yes.
Oh, it'd be given to the landlord, but the landlord would not, there would not be expect, an expectation that the landlord would return it.
Correct.
Would there be an expectation that the landlord returned it to the tenant?
No. Not that I understand.
So then.
Can I?
The grant would be to the landlord.
Can I call up our executive director? Jen Weber.
Hi.
Yeah, yeah.
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, my name is Jen Weber and I'm at 200 Preston Drive. And so the expectation is that the landlord would repay it to the program and it would be paid directly to the landlord on the tenant's behalf. So the tenant wouldn't be in the middle of any of the transaction, just the application process itself.
Right. That was one. But then at the end, if it's a grant, Joyce, you have said it would be paid directly to the landlord and then the landlord would be expected to give it to the tenant at the, at move out?
No, if it's a grant, then it would just be paid to the landlord. Actually, we didn't think that.
I'm not sure that, excuse me, Barbara, but we're not sure that all of our renters receive their entire deposit back. And so if they're paying 500 to 1,000, they may not get all of that $400 back.
Right, but actually, we haven't discussed that. If it were to be repaid in a grant form, then we hadn't considered whether it would be paid back to the Housing Authority or the tenant. So yeah, that's something that we haven't discussed in depth. But the landlord would not be obligated to repay it just because the assistance was, would be paid on the tenant's behalf. It would be used as a security deposit in any other circumstance. So if the tenant were to do any wear and tear or damages that would warrant any deduction from the security deposit, then we would just get the balance if there was any.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? Jason?
No, I think that was the biggest one for me is just a little bit more clarification of the two options.
Okay.
That question. So only doing 10 a year. So how would the person qualify? Would they have to like come to you and say, hey, I need the assistance? Can you help me? Or is there something that you look and say, oh, this person, based on the application, needs the assistance? Like, how do you know who will get the money?
Um, what we would do is, is we would offer the opportunity to those that are being issued a voucher. So when they're issued a voucher, that means that they're at an appointment and they can start searching for a unit to be placed on the program. So it would be a first-come, first-served basis. The first 10 applicants, some of our applicants or some of our voucher holders wouldn't have the need for a security deposit assistance. So it would be based on the first come, first serve of those that are in need.
But Jen, did you say everybody would be offered the application?
Um, well, the first 10 people, yeah, throughout the year. We don't have, we don't have in-depth application process at all. It basically, we're just doing the qualification on there being a low-income or extremely low-income individual. So it would be, on average, in a year, we can do anywhere from 10 to 35 vouchers. So we would be assisting. So we would be assisting on average about a third of our clientele. Which is really great considering we've not been able to assist with anything like this in the past.
Questions?
This bar, I'd like to see it as a repayment instead of a grant. Couple of things. The first thing is so that you can keep the program continuously going. If you have some more money there, instead of coming back to the city in three years and say, we'd like another twenty thousand. If you start getting this as a repayment, um, you know, there'd be additional money there to go beyond the first two years. And the second thing is when it's uh, would have to be returned from the landlord to the city. He gives a, to me, it would give the tenant a little more incentive to make sure that the deposit is returned. If the tenant knows that it's just going to be given to the landlord for four hundred dollars payment. They don't care, you know? Um, but if, you know, there's, I do see that you have it on there as a one-time assistance, which is good. But again, you know, if you look for reference and the reference can come from the landlord or from your office in the future. Look back in that person's files and say, yep, you know, we were given the full four hundred dollars back from the landlord because they left the place in good condition. You know, those layers. So.
Yes.
So myself, I would like to see that as a repayment plan instead of just a grant. So.
Yeah, I, I lean towards that side of things too. Um, because it would allow us to use the assistance in the future and hopefully it would be a perpetual account. And I know um, one of the places that I recommend to my tenants, one of the couple that I know of that offer rental or. Security deposit assistance is the Foundation of Rural Housing out of Madison. And that's where we got some of our ideas from. They do help with up to four or five hundred dollars. And it is to be repaid to that program at tenant move out. Whereas someplace like Southwest Cap, that would be more of a grant basis. But they have the opportunity to write and apply for grants on a regular basis too. So yeah, it would definitely. It would definitely last the program and future participants for a long time. But if it were a grant basis, then we're looking at about five years.
So on here it says occur, encourage applying for assistance through the Foundation of Rural Housing first.
Yes, um, that's something that I give out to everyone when I have intake interviews. So that's the one resource I have to give them for security deposit assistance right now. So that's something that I already go over in our intake interview. Um, but yeah, that was kind of something in our notes from our summary from when we were doing our discussion at our board meeting. So um, we wouldn't necessarily, I don't know that we would necessarily encourage that, but I would continue to give out the application and the information.
Do they have a qualification that they're, or does basically anybody who applies to the Foundation of Rural Housing get assistance?
Um, no, they have quite an in-depth application. So it asks um, anything from um, their income, which we have on our application. But um, it asks about if they're receiving rental assistance. Um, or if they're going to be receiving it, some of those things that helps them to ensure that they wouldn't just pay a deposit and set someone up for failure. Or, you know.
Anybody else with questions? Lynn? Ken?
No questions.
Kathy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think. That is. As we.
Emmy Roth.
Yes. We're now to the first session for Emmy Roth.
So this will be kind of short and sweet. Um, so as we kind of talked about, as I put in there, potentially there was the opportunity that they could not be available tonight. So they unfortunately were not able to come, but I think we do want to, I do quickly just want to kind of start planting the seed on what this work session is about. So. Um, there is the possibility we may have to schedule a special council session to just have dedicated towards this topic. Because depending on, you know, our only two meetings a month, they may not be able to work into that. So. I'm working with them. I'm kind of identifying some potential options in February where we, if we had to have a special meeting, we could. But what this kind of pertains to and kind of what you need to start thinking about as a council. Is there was a development agreement that was signed in two thousand twelve essentially with Emmy Roth. So at that point in time. Um, they were looking to purchase an approximately nineteen-acre parcel to be located within tax increment District Number Six. So the purpose of this development agreement was to undertake the construction. Of an artisan cheese manufacturing and storage building as well as certain related site improvements. So the development agreement was signed on April tenth, two thousand twelve and was accompanied by a construction deadline and repurchase agreement. The agreement expresses it was the intention of the City of Platteville, the sell lands only for the purpose of development of the industry. And or business within the M four Applied Technology District. So Emmy Roth expressed as a buyer, they intended to make improvements on the property in accordance with the City of Platteville zoning ordinance. So what you have in here is kind of a snapshot of some of those specific items that were in the development agreement. So what you can see is within the agreement are the following stipulations. So really the one that you kind of need to focus on is number one, which is the construction deadline. So when this was signed originally in two thousand twelve. It had in here, in the event the buyer does not undertake expansion of the then existing manufacturing and sort, and storage facility. By the tenth annual anniversary date of the development agreement between the seller and buyer. The city may repurchase from the buyer that portion of the land conveyed to the buyer. Which has not been used for the expansion of the buyer's manufacturing and or storage facility or to support such expansion. So what this kind of goes through then are some other steps in regards to kind of the options. So. What happens right now is the purpose of this work session that is going to occur is to kind of talk about the future expansion plans of Emmy Roth. Um, so we'd like to hear from them. We've had a couple of meetings of staff in regards to kind of their long-term plans. They definitely have indicated they do intend to expand. I think the question that has to come back to the council and also to the city is. A little bit of, I don't want to say pressure, but a little bit more definite timeline of, okay, what does that mean? Because essentially, you know, yes, have there been some extenuating circumstances within the last two years in regards to COVID? And in regards to building? Absolutely. So we need to take that into account. But there were eight years before that as well, where that wasn't necessarily, you know, something that could be used. There obviously could be other, you know, conversations. Um, so what we need to kind of consider is obviously, you know, have them come in front of you. Talk about when are they truly intending to expand their operation? They have told us, you know, they've said that they definitely intend to do that. We need to get some more definite information from them on, okay, what is your plan? What is your deadline? And then that kind of comes back to you as a, as a council and obviously us as staff in the city is. Theoretically, the way this development agreement was written is as of April tenth, twenty twenty-two. If you truly wanted to, you could say on that day, you have not done anything, if they have not broken ground. You can make the argument and say, look, you didn't fought, you didn't satisfy the agreement. We as the city are going to pull that back. Now, as the city manager, do I feel that's a recommendation you should make? No. Um, obviously, we don't want to do that. We want to have a very good relationship with all of our businesses, especially those that are looking at expanding. I think the conversation shifts to, okay. We understand that for whatever reason with this ten years, that didn't happen. The question now shifts to what are your plans and when is it going to occur? We need to know. All right, when, what, what, you know, what are you doing? Are you creating a storage facility? Are you adding on to your plant? When is the drop dead date that you are going to start construction? And if not. And that creates a new development agreement, I think that we need to enter into them. Because there is the possibility that we have talked to them not only about just expanding. But they do have some future considerations about possibly a corporate headquarters. As well as some other expansions that could play into the City of Platteville. Now, those are some more long-term plans. What we want to really focus on in this work session is, okay, let's talk about the parcel you currently own. And what's the timeline and work through potentially a new development agreement with them on that. In regards to, okay, you're going to expand. We want to know this. We want to know that to get a little bit more clearer picture. So. Again, we're going to, I'm going to work with them on trying to finalize a date. I'll then send that out to all of you, obviously, as council members to determine when we can do that. But. The plan now is to probably have a special council meeting that would just be dedicated to this topic. Um, so that we can really kind of do some due diligence and allow them the opportunity to comment, kind of come in, talk about what their future plans are. Um, and get a better understanding of where we need to go from there. There you go.
Okay. I think uh, we're looking for one more motion tonight.
I moved to adjourn.
For a second. Motion and second to adjourn. Candace will vote.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian? Nichols?
Cop?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you, everyone, for attending.